Okay, welcome back. We are on to, where are we at? Nine point... nine point three seven. Bylaw number eighteen seventy-seven. Yep, the red light's on.
So Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen seventy-seven, authorizing the MD of Bonneville into an agreement to license a portion of the road allowance north of the north half of thirty-six, fifty-eight of eight, in accordance with policy three A point zero one eight, as shown on the map on Appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance to be used as agricultural use for grazing of cattle. A copy of this application was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. The applicant currently has an existing roadway licensing agreement under bylaw eighteen fifty-two for the east portion that's shown on that Appendix A. So if bylaw eighteen seventy-seven is approved, this bylaw would repeal that bylaw, and we will put both portions onto one bylaw. So Administration is recommending that council give first reading to bylaw eighteen seventy-seven.
Mr. Rivaldo, first reading, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for making this motion, that bylaw number eighteen seventy-seven being the bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways license be given first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to nine point three point eight.
So Administration received a written request to purchase the northeast of eight, sixty-four, west of the fourth meridian, which is located just east of Muriel Lake, shown on Appendix C. It is owned by the MD. The sale of the northeast of eight, sixty-four, would fall under policy C dash three eight point zero one nine, disposal of municipal lands. The lands are currently being used for agricultural purposes through a municipal lands licensing agreement, which expires December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. It has the option to extend the licensing agreement for one additional three-year term. Information regarding the northeast of eight, sixty-four, parcel size is one hundred and fifty-nine point oh-two acres, it has a soil productivity rating of seven. The minimum annual licensing amount for, as per the policy of licensing, is three dollars per acre, which is what is currently being licensed out at, which totals into about five hundred dollars and ninety-one cents a year. Municipal taxes paid by the licensee in two thousand twenty-three was forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. There also is a surface lease with Gear Energy Limited on the parcel, and the leasing does pay three thousand and sixty dollars to the MD annually. The fair market value is estimated on this parcel at two hundred thousand dollars. So internal referrals were conducted, and the following comments were received. Infrastructure Services would be interested in completing gravel exploration on the property before giving a final decision on whether or not there is any interest in the land. So pursuant to policy C dash three eight point zero one nine, the disposable municipal lands policy, which is attached to Appendix D, all lands subject to this policy could be sold by these ways. So the first is a direct sale at fair market value. That being said, it would need to be advertised in accordance with the MD public notification bylaw for a period of two consecutive weeks. If multiple offers were received after the public notification timeline, the lands would then be sold by public auction. Or it could go straight to public auction. And with the public auction, each parcel shall be subject to a reserve bid of eighty percent of the estimated market value. So Administration's recommendation is that the request to purchase the MD titled lands, the northeast of eight, sixty-four, at fair market value be referred back to Administration for additional information regarding gravel exploration and to bring back to a future meeting of council.
Okay, thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we bring it back to a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion, that council refers request to purchase the MD titled land, northeast eight sixty-four, west of the fourth meridian, as a fair market value, back to Administration for additional information regarding gravel exploration and bring back to a future meeting of council. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. On to nine point three point nine.
So Planning and Community Service Department is presenting their quarterly reports, and I'm going to start with Appendix A, which is for planning and development. So on the first page, at a glance, in the second quarter, we issued one hundred and seventeen development permits, sixty-three building permits. We had two new subdivision applications. We processed fifty-one Realtor reports. Calls received at our planning and development reception only were two thousand and fifty-seven, that's what we received. Thirteen housing starts. We had one hundred and sixty-three safety codes permits, two hundred and eighty-eight inspection reports, a hundred address signs were ordered, and we sent out thirty-four satisfaction surveys. So for development permits, you can see that we had permits across all wards, one through six, with the tops wards being one, five, and six, with the most development. One hundred and seventeen permits were issued. With the average time to issue for a permitted use permit, it took three days. For an approach permit, it takes twenty-three days to issue that permit, and discretionary use permits were averaged at twenty-seven days. So for building permits, there was sixty-three building permits issued, the majority of them, fifty-three of them, were residential. Average time to issue a building permit was fifteen days in the second quarter, with a total construction value of just over sixteen point nine million dollars. We had two new applications received, and an average of forty days to approval for applications, and five applications endorsed in the second quarter. So out of the one hundred and sixty-three safety code permits issued, we had seventy-two electrical, eighteen plumbing, fifty gas, and twenty-three septic permits, with a total of two hundred and eighty-eight inspection reports received back from our inspectors. The average time to issue these permits, electrical, plumbing, and gas are issued in the same day. Septic permits take a couple days because there is a review, so our septic permits took an average of three days. Some quick updates, Realtor reports, fifty-one completed, with a turnaround time of two-point five days. We had a hundred address signs ordered, ninety-two have been picked up, and the turnaround time for ordering those signs is two weeks. We had no new non-compliances reported to us, but we did resolve nine new non-com... nine non-compliances with issuances of development and building permits. So the Marie Lake Forestry, the subdivision, the forestry lands, a meeting was held with the Minister of Forestry of Parks on June nineteenth of two thousand twenty-four to try and expedite the MD's acquisition of the lands. However, there is no new updates at this time, but we are hoping for something speedy to happen there. Satisfaction surveys, thirty-four surveys were sent out, four were received back from us, they were all satisfied, two very satisfied. Some updates on our area structure plans, so the Moose Lake and Chicken Hill ASP, both received first reading on June eleventh, the public hearing was held on July ninth, and it just got finalized earlier today with second and third readings. And the Crane Lake and Highway fifty-five area structure plans, survey results were received, and a community engagement summary was prepared for each of the ASPs to be posted on the municipal website, as well as mailed to stakeholders and landowners within the area structure boundaries. So those draft ASPs did receive first reading also earlier in this meeting. Couple more project updates, the municipal lands bylaw education, so site inspections were completed to determine signage necessary and locations of the two thousand twenty-four priority areas, so we will be signing and actually sending out pamphlets to the Birch Ridge Estates with Spring Spruce, as well as Ethel Lake subdivisions. So mailouts were being created for education in conjunction with upcoming sign installation to be completed in Q three. Our land use bylaw, so open houses were held the beginning of May of two thousand twenty-four to introduce the project to the landowners, stakeholders, and community members. An online survey was also available from May seventeenth to June twenty-first for community members to provide their feedback. So we did have a what we heard report for feedback was received, it was drafted and posted on the municipal website, as well as an article in the August Rural Review. Is there any questions? Me? You got me again for asset management? So just a quick update from asset management, the state of the infrastructure reports, so for parks and recreation is on hold at the moment, as well as asset register and data collection is on hold. GIS at a glance, our GIS technician completed five maps within this quarter, four forms, surveys, and quick captures, as well as four other completed projects. Some ongoing projects, most notable, the two thousand twenty-four MD land ownership map is a hundred percent complete. Waste Services interactive map is at forty percent. The road inventory data reconciliation in GIS is at seventy-five percent, and Emergency and Protective Services response maps are sitting at fifty percent. Yeah, I think Mr. Kovach is up next.
Good afternoon, Reeve and council, it's my pleasure this afternoon to present the second quarter progress report for economic development.
Good afternoon.
You will see in front of you that for the second quarter, attended thirteen meetings, worked on two lead generations, started work on two projects, had twelve new registrants for the business registry program, did eight business visits, and attended three conferences or trade shows. Referring to the business industry growth strategy from an investment readiness perspective, the registry program is ongoing, the web design is completed, the business visitation program continues with a full report to be presented in Q three, as it'll have been a full year for the program. We've completed our value proposition for the website. From an investment attraction perspective, we applied for and received the NRED grant, which is ongoing, which contains an industrial commercial gap analysis project, which has kicked off. We have been approved for an airport development impact assessment, and we're also in underway with the planning and delivery of the Site Link Forum, which I'll provide a much further update later in the report. The ACP Commercial Industrial Property Listings was a grant that we applied for in conjunction with Hub members, that's ongoing. Business attraction and retention programs is ongoing. We have completed a community profile that's been posted to the new website, and we're in... we're part of a project for an unmanned aerial vehicle grant through SCOOP, which is through the provincial government, and that's in conjunction with other Hub members as well. From an economic development diversification perspective, regional collaboration is ongoing as we continue to work with REEP and Hub on several projects, continue to identify shovel-ready projects, and continue to work with Invest Alberta and Invest Canada. And over the second quarter, we replied to two project proposals or lead generations, one was Project Clay, which has been submitted, and Project Lightning, which has been submitted. Project Clay is eco-cosmetics, and the Project Lightning is a data center. From brand development perspective, we continue to work with the Communications Department on ongoing materials. We continue to work on the MD Champion Ambassador Program, a policy is pending for being presented for approval, and we continue to deliver on our economic development newsletter. The second quarter addition has been complete and been distributed. Stakeholder meetings include those with Realtors and brokers in the region, Community Futures, Invest Alberta, Invest Canada, Alberta Agriculture and Irrigation, Portage College, the Economic Developers of Alberta, Connect for Food, Alberta Hub, Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce, North Alberta, Northern Alberta Development Council, iArt or iMarkets, Pathways Alliance, and Labor Marker... Labor Market Partnership. Project updates, the coordination of Webster Global with regards to Site Link, the launch of an online registration portal for Site Link, events and attraction, or sorry, monthly event and committee meetings, which a council representative attends on a regular basis. Identifying program speakers and special guests have been confirmed, social media campaign has been started, and tour sites have been confirmed. And if you'll indulge me, I will provide some greater details on Site Link, it'll just take a few moments. Site Link is on the near horizon. The event has two components, one is education and one is an industrial tour. The educational component is an opportunity for local economic development professionals, elected officials, real estate developers, and others to receive tips and best practices on investment attraction from various sectors, and representing major manufacturers and commercial interests from across the globe. The educational component will take place September eighteenth to twentieth at Cold Lake Best Western, and I strongly urge all of council to attend, and my... I think I've heard back from probably seventy-five percent of council that they will be attending, so thank you very much for that. So this particular event has site selectors that are representative of the different industry sectors that we targeted in the business and industry growth strategy. Paige Webster is the lead presenter, and he has experience in aerospace, biotech, geothermal, wind, solar, warehouse distribution, office projects, and the retail sector. While working in Arizona, he was also involved in value-added agriculture and plastic molding. Jamie Newell is also a consultant broker, and she brings with her twenty years of experience. What's important about Jamie is that she has relationships with companies like Toyota and Toyo, and industrial tech services, APN Investments, Slumber Shield, Scotland... companies in Scotland, Blue Pack Marketing, Forge Investment. So she brings with her a stable of clients that could be interested in our community from across the globe. Lou Mellencamp is an individual who will be there as well. He has experience in site selection for healthcare services, financial services, aerospace, and manufacturing, as well as education, hospitality, and technology. Grant Kelba is an individual from Calgary who's involved not only in real estate, but is also involved in tourism development. He was responsible for the development of the mascot for the Calgary Flames, and as a result of being involved with the Calgary Flames and the Calgary Olympics, he was a developer of a tourism product for an online booking service called Resort to Fitness, which was one of the first five hundred domains in Canada that was registered for and was involved with tourism booking for special events, and was directly involved in the Paraplegic Association. Christine Wong will also be there, she's a veteran of site selection, and she's worked in economic development in areas including meat processing and healthcare systems and other medical attraction, and as well as developing programs in different states and involving development attraction that she generated over one point eight billion dollars worth of capital investment, creating over five thousand dollars, or five thousand jobs. These individuals represent a significant opportunity for us to connect, not only us as a government, but to connect to local Realtors, developers, and contractors, and create those opportunities to have access to investment opportunities that normally wouldn't directly be given to us without this relationship. So I'll go over the opportunities for counselors to attend these events, to be involved in networking and create those relationships. So on Wednesday evening, which would be September the eighteenth, there'll be a stand-up reception at Portage College from five to seven. There'll be a invitation-only exclusive sponsorship barbecue dinner at the Shaw House, and that'll be from seven to ten PM, and I strongly suggest that all of you attend as our CEO, Al Hogan, will be doing the barbecuing for us, so he'll be cooking our steaks and our hamburgers, and my understanding is that he's exceptional at that.
So it'll take out life insurance, you're saying, for this event?
Yeah, exactly. I maybe shouldn't have commented on that last part, but yeah, for sure. So that's Wednesday. For Friday, there is an opportunity at one-thirty to three o'clock in the Maple Room for a discovery session, and this session will provide an opportunity for the site selectors to talk directly to the counselors and to senior administration, and talk about those situations and answer questions that the site selectors will have for us in order for us to develop that relationship. And on that end, we have created a list of top ten questions we believe that the site selectors will be asking you, and we will have provided common answers for all of you to respond to the site selectors. So that's another important event for them to get to know us, to get to know our administration, and to get to know what's available in our community and develop those relationships. After that, discovery opportunity, which is basically a one-on-one with the site selectors, there'll be an opportunity to do a tour of CFB Cold Lake between three-thirty and four-thirty on that Friday afternoon. And the piece de resistance, as far as I'm concerned, is the industrial tour, which takes place on September the twenty-first, and that's an opportunity, again, for council and senior administration, and select business individuals, including Realtors, brokers, and contractors, to tour our area. We'll start at the Cold Lake Best Western, we'll pass by the college, and then we'll tour all of the industrial subdivisions in the MD. We'll have a site visit at Nabiate, we'll end up having lunch at the Willow Prairie Hall, then we'll have a presentation at the airport, we'll visit more subdivisions, then we'll make our way to the Kinnisou and have a white table dinner with the site selectors and send them off. So my strong recommendation is that you are all involved in the industrial tour on Saturday, and as many of you can attend, please to the discovery session between one-thirty and three on Friday at the Cold Lake Best Western, and the Shaw House exclusive sponsorship dinner on Wednesday night between seven and ten.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions? Councilor Fadiev?
I'm assuming our friendly local reporter is going to be there as well.
Yeah, so we haven't issued any media releases at this point. For the tour specifically, we have issued media releases about the event. As far as them being on the tour, seating is limited, and I apologize, I can't confirm that a seat is available for press, but that's a media, and so I think that's a very good idea, and I'll make sure that that's looked at as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll stand if she's included.
Okay. I think I have my marching orders on this one.
Right on, thank you.
No other questions?
Yeah, great job, thank you, good presentation.
Thank you.
Lisa too.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Here for the Parks and Rec two thousand twenty-four second quarter progress report. Starting off with a few of the highlights, Parks and Recreation kickoff with their new seasonal operation team model, we had over fifty-plus staff members were at that barbecue, plus a few invitees as well. April first was the opening day of our campsite bookings, we ended up having six hundred and sixty-seven total bookings that day. That was four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine nights that were booked, which was a total revenue of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand plus dollars in revenue. A few of our project updates, the VIC retrofit, building retrofit is sitting right now at about eighty percent. We're still looking for some interpretive displays, things like that. Vesel Beach Phase Two, ninety percent complete on that one, we are still looking at finishing off the fencing around the campground itself. Lacory Rec Park Development, that's a hundred percent complete now. The Cold Lake MD Park Boat Launch has been awarded to a local contractor, we're hoping to start construction on that one September the twenty-third, soon as the campground is closed, and we're counting on all in-water work to be done by the end of November, November thirtieth. Chicken Hill Boat Dock at the campground, that one is a hundred percent complete and is in operation, people have been using it. The Cold Lake Picnic Shelter, we're going to be replacing the Cold Lake Picnic Shelter, that's up there right now, we're at ten percent, we're just into the design phase of that right now. Hopefully, we get that back here by the end of the month, and we can go ahead with that for construction this fall, early spring. The Bonneville Wellness Coalition, Vesel Beach space, we're fifty percent complete on that, we have the tables ordered up, we're going to be installing some tables here next week on that one as well. And one of our projects, the Cold Lake Shower Building that went out during the second quarter was the, well, the Cold Lake Shower Building, we ended up getting one bid back on that one, it was a little over budget, and the criteria or the design that they provided us was a little bit lacking, so we are right now on hold with that one, and we'll see in the new capital budget that's coming up, some changes on that one. Ongoing playground inspection program that we have, we're continuing with the monthly inspections, we have seventeen playgrounds that we inspect monthly. Annually, we've done in-depth inspections of fifteen of our playgrounds, that's where we end up having a ten, ten-to-twelve-page report on those ones. Our commemorative bench program, we have two benches that we have purchased, this is with the Bonneville Wellness Coalition for the Vesel Beach area that we've provided. Our baseball diamonds, Muriel Lake and Fort Kent, by the end of May till mid-August, we are booked six nights a week. We're constantly down there each and every day, doing our general maintenance, our chalking lines, and doing the maintenance of the ball diamonds for users. Our picnic table rental program, we donated to four different events, we've had five internal events, we've rented out to two events. Jump right down to the trail usage, if we look at the trail usage compared to last year, these are our paved trails that are all around, our Moose Lake, Ardmore Stormwater Pond, it's in Ardmore, and our trails down at Muriel Lake, they have been down a little bit this year, still being used, but they are down pretty much across the board with all of them by around ten percent in usage. Our campground bookings, revenue by campground, we have a chart there for that one as well. Our Cold Lake being our busiest Cold Lake, or being our busiest campground, and our largest campground, as you can expect, it is our largest revenue gain at forty-three point eight percent. Next in line to that one would be the Vesel Beach at eighteen point nine percent. Crane Lake would come in third at twelve point eight percent. And the remaining of them are all sitting at around the two, two-point-nine, Wolf Lake seven point two percent, again, based on the size of the campground and the number of sites, revenue would be a little bit on the higher end. Our Parks and Recreation Security, we have security patrols going around all of our campgrounds, our baseball fields, and our outdoor ranks each night, so it's seven nights a week. They've addressed several concerns, such as a lot of noise complaints, drinking on public land that's on the beaches, vandalism, ATV driving in some of our campgrounds that are in prohibited areas. There's several different items that they've addressed. Dropping down into the OHV Pelican Point program, we've had a few campers, not as many as we would like to see, take advantage of the new pilot project that we have going on out there. Right now, we're working with marketing on strategies to increase the numbers of the OHV use that are in that area, so you'll see that coming ahead soon. Campground bookings, up to June the thirtieth, being the second quarter, our numbers have increased across the board, we have two campgrounds that are a little under, Pelican Point were down nine bookings compared to last year, Crane Lake were down forty-two bookings compared to last year. But in total, if we look at all the campgrounds, we have four thousand two hundred and forty bookings, and compare that to last year's, that was three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, we have a four hundred and seventy-one booking increase this year. Our camping fees is also an increase of approximately forty thousand dollars, we have currently up to date two hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenue or fees. Our shower has also increased by eleven thousand dollars, or a lot of eleven thousand, one point one thousand. It was one thousand four hundred and one dollars last, or this year, last year was at three hundred and thirteen dollars, so we've increased by a thousand, thousand one hundred dollars. Our firewood sales have increased quite a bit. firewood sales have increased quite a bit here. This year, we're at $15,290 on our firewood sales. Last year in quarter two, we're at $4,455. That's an increase of $11,000 just in the firewood sales. Our rate your stays from all of our campers, we ended up having 38. People replied back saying exceptional. We have 14 saying good, and as of the second quarter, we had zero for four. Now, that's only, we're still only looking at 52 people that report comments back to us, and we had 4,880 bookings, so it's quite a bit of a difference there. Our, I'll jump right into the community services. Second quarterly report for the community services. Community giving, donations, sponsorships, and recognition policy. We've had 28 of 32 requests approved, $9,750 in monetary donations or sponsorships, $5,600 in in-kind services and promotional items. Council givings, there was three requests, $57,730 funded. Community action grants, as of the June 15 intake, seven of nine applications were approved, $33,400 awarded. That's a total of $106,480 in community giving. Last page, there was a list of all the, the requestees. I won't go through the full amount there. Visitors information and interpretive center report, number of visitors right now, currently, we're at 657 visitors compared to last year's 219. Out of the, out of the 657, local, there are 356 people, provincial are 96 guests, national 17, and international 5 that have dropped in. Trading Post, we're at a revenue of 100, or $1,676 compared to last year's $1,370. Our concession, we're at $4,587. A lot of that is ice cream. The kids are enjoying the ice cream at Shaw House, I gotta say. Last year, we don't have a, a number on that, but we didn't open it up until the third quarter, so I don't have something to compare it to. The meeting room rentals, we've had 12 rentals downstairs. One was external, 11 of them were internal. And that it is, that's it for both reports. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, just two comments. I, I like how you deflected the ice creams to the children, not the staff. But yeah, good job. So in regards to the Cold Lake campground, yeah, I got, getting a lot of feedback of being very positive, and friends that are having their family down are just, just loving it, and just wanted, you know, you guys to know that.
Excellent, Fadiev.
I guess I had a couple of comments. I had two people the other day approached me and asked about Shelter Bay, and I know we discussed that, that'd be quite a program, but it's one of our nicer lakes in the MD. I think we should just explore that a little bit more. Also, someone said, like, Muriel Lake doesn't have a caretaker no more, I believe?
Correct.
And they just, someone commented to me, they're, they're scared to be there now with their family without a caretaker, so it's, yeah, just, it's funny. Just a little bit of reassurance that there's a caretaker driving around makes a big difference, I guess. Just a comment.
Certainly. So for our Muriel Lake campground, we have maintenance people that are, that are down there every day. The park attendant or the caretaker person is out of our Vesel Beach admin building. That being said, we are looking at next year, making a few minor changes there, where we will have somebody down there throughout the day, between 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night is what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think caretakers are, myself, my own personal, it means a lot to some people that come to a certain lake every year. It's just like the mom and dad of, or whoever, or dad or a mom that's at that lake. I think it, it does mean a lot to certain people, right? Any other comments? No, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Reeve and council.
Good afternoon.
Second quarter, the review of revenue and expenses. So as you can see, we've done a comparison with the '22, '23, '24, just to show kind of what the variance is along the boards. There was, due to the operational hours creating that critical mass, shutting two days a week, we saw a $14,000 revenue drop, but then on the expenses side, we saw $100,000 savings. So, just to be aware, and then as we go through the next slide, it will show the program area, and then the following slides will dig into the program area a bit more. So, as you can see with the adventure park, we've gone from 16, 19 to $22,000 annually. Summer camps, we didn't have them in '22. We have seen quite an uptick this season, because this is the second quarter report, it doesn't capture all the funds in there, as people will register for the camp a few weeks before. Also, this year, we are doing day camps, so people could drop off their kids for the single day, and we found that to be quite successful as well. Target Golf, in previous years, it hadn't been opened for the second quarter. We got it operating by the second quarter this year, so you see the revenue associated there. For the restaurant, you do see there is a slight drop in revenue of just over $2,000, but then when you look on the expenses as we go through, you'll see kind of how that correlates. With the winter revenue, you'll see quite a spike in '23. That's because, because of weather, the hill was able to be open two additional days, which saw just under $40,000 of revenue. So, because of weather, we weren't able to have those days, so that's why there is a variance there. Going back through from own sources, you will see quite a uptick this year. That's because of a second condiment in the second quarter we had, so there was some revenue recognized in there. And then the totals, as you see them across the board, and then the amount of operational days in each of those years. For the adventure park, I know one of the big questions that was asked multiple times was about the swing. Working with McElhany and Adursa, getting those engineered stamp drawings, we were able to get that up and running for the beginning of the season. And then, as we saw the school visits, we've gone from 352 to 614. We did reduce the cost to schools a little bit, as we found that affordability to the schools. We were gonna lose numbers if we couldn't find the right price for them. So it's just kind of working within that system, knowing where kind of our numbers are coming from, from there, and it aligns with other aerial parks of the same size of us. And of those 614 kids, it's close to 600 kids that got to experience the swing ride. And then, as we go to public visits, as we've talked about, we've seen a steady decrease in that number. Total visits, though, with the increased school numbers, almost 200 more visits in that second quarter. The operating expenses have gone down substantially, and the revenue has gone up. And then, as you see historically over the last three years, just breaking it down to what sort of the day looks like from a loss perspective, and we've gone from almost a $2,700 day loss down to $270, so definitely trending in the right direction. Next one is the school visits, and as you can see, quite, quite a substantial difference this year in the school visits. There were a couple of issues on that. One was the price point. The second one was their liability insurance from a naming convention, of what it was called. That was cleared up at the end of '23, so '24, all schools had the correct liability to use the aerial park. The Ridge Restaurant, just going back through the operational days, you'll see how those vary in the second quarter. The revenue difference was around that $2,000, but the cost savings was closer to almost $40,000 in there. So once again, looking at it from a business perspective, you know, with that revenue, where's that critical mass, and not tipping it too far over. For programs and special events, we've listed them out and sort of where registration numbers were at. So summer camps, you can see down there, as we don't have a '22 comparator, as they weren't formed yet, but with the Q3 of 58 children versus the 30 children coming through, it's quite a good difference, and we'll show in that third quarter revenue report accordingly. Birthday packages doubled this year, so if you were in on the weekends, you'd see sometimes one or two birthday parties, depending on the weekend. We had a couple where we had two going at the same time. We did have a golf academy where we did teach children just the basics of golf. So we've ran quite a few students through the academy to this point. Private bookings, we had the, in the second quarter, we had the Smart Start Conference with 55 participants. Last week, we did have a retirement do of 130 people on a Thursday evening, so that was quite a good revenue generating opportunity. Also, for next summer, we want to really encourage the weddings going on there. So just working with Pure Creations, they were able to get some very nice decor upstairs. We were able to do a photo shoot. We had a bride that was available in a dress and for marketing pa, packages in the future. So really gonna try to lean into that for the '25 season. Resort guests, so once again, you have the map in front of you, just showing kind of where our people are coming from. And once again, same kind of trend, you see the 58% from Cold Lake, 27 from the MD, and 7% coming from Bonneville. We do have a few guests that came in also from Saskatchewan, and all this information is gathered from passes and waivers, and that's how we're gathering the information for people coming through. So if you're just going to the restaurant, we're not gonna interrogate you on where you live, but just from the information that we gather, we, we've put it into the slide. The next one is our marketing slide, and then this just kind of shows views off of the Instagram website, Facebook. And then, our top pages being the Canooso Ridge homepage, Jobs at Canooso was number two, the Adventure Park, three, Winter Activities, four, and then the restaurant was five. Other marketing items that we looked at during the second quarter was our radio advertisement. We had summer camp posters that we were putting up at each school and resource centers. We had an Adventure Park poster that was sent to all the campgrounds and the provincial campgrounds, and we did notice that we were getting more guests coming from campgrounds with posting those out there. We did a summer brochure where we sent out over 15,000 to various mailboxes, just to see if we could get that local traction coming back in. We did two paid Facebook campaigns for events. And then, for each of the events that we went to, we marked the tickets to which event it was for a discount coupon, so as people are coming through the restaurant or aerial park, that we can identify where we're getting the people from, so we know where to focus our energies, where we're going in the community as well. And then, as you can see, the booth, we redesigned the tent. We got some new tablecloths, some new banners, just to make it look a little more appealing for people coming up to get that engagement. And then, as the front slide shows, that was from the La Corrie Farm Fair, so it was one of the events that we did get some good traction from. For our capital projects, just for a quick update, Canooso Main Gate, we're looking for the certain aesthetics with that gate, too, and functionality, so we're looking for an automated gate in there with various codes, so that our bonded contractors that come through, whether it be septic or lending companies or food vendors, we can have them punch in. We know who's coming in and out of gates to make sure. We have, our operations crew is working with a contractor, just to see what other designs we can get with regards to that. The wedding venue deck is linked in with the Phase 1 trails, as we know, McElhany and Legacy Tourism did come in, and they're proposing a lot of items that we'll see at capital budget, as we've done our kind of wanton wishlist versus the Legacy Tourism list and the five-year financial implications to the MD. So there'll be more decision points to make around that, but we just don't wanna end up putting the wedding deck where potentially we're gonna be putting another piece of infrastructure, so we wanna be very careful so we're not moving it twice. Snow gun replacement, we went through procurement early in January. They've been procured, we're just waiting for them to be shipped from Italy. Pack backup power generator, the meter was moved on April 30th, and the generator will be shipped on-site around September 24th. Truck replacement, those went out in the truck replacement tender package that went out, so that has been delivered on-site. AC upgrades, we did have a big line item in here. After not getting some timely responses from our future, our former mechanical contractor, we used another mechanical contractor and just realized that we did have the capacity to have AC within that building. So there are a couple sensors that we need to override that have been, that we've been waiting for shipment for about two, three weeks now, but once those get in, we should have the capacity within the building to have the AC on, so hopefully we can put that money back into the reserves. Chairlift load decks, so we had Doppelmeyer come in and do some maintenance warranty on the lifts, so we do have the supplies, we do have the plan all laid out for that. They just left this Saturday, so we will be getting those done here very shortly. And then, the last item was the Phase 1 Trail Planning Project. Once again, we did have McElhany come in, talk to us. Legacy Tourism was on the screen, just talking about the feasibility of how we're gonna move forward. So I think during budget deliberations, we'll have a good opportunity to look at those numbers and decide what direction we are headed in. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanna say, good job on all that, the numbers you presented there. And thank you for meeting with us when we brought Minnis McHyver out there with Reeve, myself in it. And a question that was brought up was about that.
The paving from.
The walk path, yeah. Have we looked into that for what cost?
Yeah, we have. We do have some budget available within the adventure park, and we would like to try to get that done this year. We are closing on the 15th for seasonality, and then after that point, we can look. Obviously, with the site selector tour coming on the 21st, we wanna have the opportunity to take visitors and guests up to the lookout here, so we wouldn't do it till after the 21st, and then I know, weather-wise, you know, we should be good for a little bit, but we are looking into it and getting it done this year.
Yeah, well, I just wanna say thank you, 'cause you were a big help there in discussing the resort to Mr. McHyver, and he was very impressed with the, with the.
Facility there and stuff.
Resort and all that, and so a lot of, I think a lot of good came out at visit and the discussions. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, you got a question? Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, just a more comment, just looking forward to the Show and Shine on September 1st, on Sunday. So anybody that has a somewhat of a hot car, if you don't have a hot car, just leave it at home, but show up Sunday, and we'll be there for, yeah.
So guys with stolen cars come to the car show, is what you're saying? Sorry, I interrupted.
Coffee and breakfast, $5 special, so come early.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for getting that in, Counselor Fadiev. All right, well, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, and one more thing, just administration recommendation action, that council accepts the Planning and Community Services 2024 Second Quarterly Report as information.
Thank you, just looking for a motion now, gentlemen? Yep, thank you, Counselor Fadiev, for making this motion. That council accepts Planning and Community Services 2024 Second Quarterly Report as information. Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 9.4.1.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and all council.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to present the unaudited financial statements. This purpose of the report is to present council with financial results for the second quarter ending June 30th, 2024. Regular quarterly financial reporting provides council with the financial, required financial information to make informed business decisions and assist in meeting council's responsibility to the community, as well as adhering to the CAO's legislative responsibility to inform council. Attached for council's review is. legislative responsibility to inform council. Attached for council's review is Appendix A, Statement of Operations, which is actual versus budget comparison. Appendix B, Statement of Financial Position, Assets or Rel liabilities. Appendix C, Schedule of the Reserves. Each reserved is listed there with the dollar amount in each of the reserves, totaling a little over seventy-eight million dollars. Appendix D, Investment Continuity Schedule. This includes the seventy-eight million dollars from all of the reserves, plus a little over a million dollars from our general bank account. Appendix E is the Capital Project Work in Progress Report, which lists all of the active projects with the approximate completion date, as well as the percentage of dollars spent thus far. Administration's recommendation is that council accepts the unaudited financial statement report for the two thousand twenty-four second quarter ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four as information.
Thank you. Looking for.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Slipchik, for making this motion. The council accepts unaudited financial statements report for the two thousand twenty-four second quarter ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four as information. Anybody has any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That's carried.
Thank you very much.
On to nine point four point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. Administration is presenting policy number two B dot zero one zero internet banking policy to be rescinded through the policy review process. It was determined that this policy was written as a procedure, not as a policy. So thus, the policy number two B dot zero one zero internet banking policy will, it will be rescinded, and the policy will be reissued as a, as an internal procedure. Attached is the policy for your review, and this report will be posted on the M D website, along with council's agenda for August twenty-seventh. The recommendation is that council rescinds policy number two B dot zero one zero internet banking policy.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion. Yes, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion. That council rescinds policy number two B zero one zero internet banking policy. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to, on to nine point four point three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. This report is presenting policy number two B dot zero two one cash handling policy to be rescinded. So again, through the policy review process, it was determined that this policy was a procedure, not a policy, and we're requesting that it be rescinded and reissued as a, as an internal procedure. Again, it'll be posted on the M D website with the agenda package. The recommendation is that council rescinds policy number two B dot zero two one cash handling policy.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Slipchik, for making this motion. The council rescinds policy number two B zero two one cash handling policy. Any discussion on this policy? I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to nine point four point four.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. Alberta Municipal Affairs annually reports a performance measure that identifies the percentage of municipalities that are deemed to not face potential long-term viability challenges based on their financial and governance indicators. This performance indicator is used as a benchmark to ensure Albertans live in viable municipalities and communities with responsible, collaborative, and accountable local governments. The performance measure is based on analysis of thirteen municipal indicators. Each of the indicators has a defined benchmark. Municipality is deemed to not face potential long-term viability challenges if it flags one critical indicator or three or more non-critical indicators. The M D of Bonneville did not meet the threshold for one non-critical indicator for the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. This indicator relates to infrastructure age and tells us that the net book value of the municipality's tangible capital assets is less than forty percent of the original cost. The M D's result is thirty-two point seven five percent, well below the expected result of more than forty percent. This means that the municipality is not replacing existing assets on a regular basis. Alberta Municipal Affairs recommends that council considers conducting a study of municipal infrastructure to ensure that future service requirements can be met. The M D is currently implementing an asset management program, which will essentially provide the M D with the evidence-based data and the financial capacity to move forward in addressing this issue. So attached for council's review is the Municipal Affairs Municipal Indicators Listing. There, and this report again will be posted on the M D's website with this agenda package. The recommendation is that council accepts the two thousand twenty-three Municipal Indicators Report as presented for information.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll move that we receive it as information.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion. The council accepts the two thousand twenty-three Municipal Indicators Report as presented as information. Any, yeah, go ahead, Counsel Scarsen.
So is this, like, when was this report conducted and completed? Is this just recently?
So this, through the Reeve, this report was presented to us about a month ago, and it was based on the results of our audited financial statement for two thousand twenty-three. So that, the Municipal Affairs takes the data from all of the municipalities and does this analysis, and it becomes part of their annual report that you'll find on Alberta's government website.
So they, so they do this each year to every municipality?
Exactly, yes.
And then, so how long have we had our asset management program going on?
So through the Reeve, I've only been here for two years, and it has, it was just sort of getting started when, when I started. So we're building that program, which will essentially provide us with what Municipal Affairs is advising us to do, and provide factual data related to our assets, and allow us to target our funding to projects that will help address our infrastructure needs, you know, to repair and replace and refurbish.
So then, how does this compare to previous years? I don't remember seeing this last year.
Through the Reeve, I don't believe a report was brought to council last year, and I'm not sure if, if, what Municipal Affairs sent out prior to that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to nine point four point five.
So thank you. This is our, for Corporate Services, this is the second quarterly report, and Assessment Services is up first.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon.
This is the Assessment Services Second Quarterly Report. That includes April, May, June, and it's as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three property tax revenue. In two thousand twenty-three, at this time, June thirtieth, about two point seven million dollars was collected. This year, we're a little down on that. We're at two point five, about two hundred thousand dollars less. The total levy for last year was about a hundred and three million dollars. This year, we're slightly up on that, a hundred and five million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, about two hundred and six million, two mil, two point six million dollars increase. Twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three property tax properties, that's the number of properties being, that have paid this year, is one thousand and twenty-seven properties. It's about four hundred and fourteen less properties than last year that have paid at that June thirtieth period. Last year, a total of thirteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-five properties were levied for property tax. This year, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine, about a hundred and four more properties. This is due to growths, subdivisions, and a few extra oil wells, that type of thing paying tax. Summary for the quarter for the property tax penalty levied. Last year, year to date, two thousand twenty-three, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars was in penalties levied, levied, and this year, it's one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, and the penalties were applied as of March first, two thousand twenty-four. Property tax revenue, the tax notices were mailed out on May thirty-first, twenty-four this year. Last year, it was May twenty-sixth. Property tax payment plan, this is where rate peers can pay monthly property taxes. And there's, in two thousand twenty-three, there was one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six properties of the five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine residential properties. About twenty-two percent were paying on the payment plan. This year, one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight properties out of the five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six residential properties were paying this way, roughly the same as twenty-two percent. Twenty twenty-four arrears list, in two thousand twenty-three, there was ninety-four properties qualified to be placed on the tax arrears list. This year, there was eighty. Summary for the quarter of property assessment, the DIP properties, DIP stands for Designated Industrial Properties. Now, there's two types of those. One is the linear, which is the pipelines, wells, and power lines. And in that category, there was no material assessment revisions and no appeals. And for the other DIP category, the nonlinear, the M and E, and that's machinery and equipment and buildings and structures, again, there was no material assessment revisions or no appeals. I did notice this year in my inspections, there's a lot more rigs working in the M D. My count's about six or seven, so it's pretty busy out there in the old patch.
Definitely.
Yeah. For the property assessment on the municipal side, municipal role, that's the residential, farmland, commercial properties. The property appeal date, deadline was August tenth. That fell on a weekend, so that got moved to August twelfth. At that time, we had no appeals, but after that, we did get one, one day after that. Now, because that's a appeal outside of the deadline, the lands, Land and Property Rights Tribunal will hear that and make a decision if that appeal can move forward. This is the issue. And the municipal insurance expenses, in two thousand twenty-three, the total expenses were four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars for the entire year. To the June thirtieth period of this year, end of this quarter, it was four hundred and twenty-nine thousand and seventy-eight dollars. That would conclude my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Just a lot of thank yous, I guess.
Thank you.
All right.
Good day.
Good day.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to present the second quarter activity for the Finance Department. So on our first slide that we have, the number of invoices that we had compared from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, we had two hundred and forty-five less invoices. However, the increase of dispersment was a little, four point three million dollars more in dispersments for our accounts payable. Utilities in our customers, for our waste customers, we have four hundred and thirty-eight customers, water, two hundred and ninety-seven, sewer, two hundred and ninety-nine, bulk water, three hundred and fifty-three. We have a total outstanding at the end of June was twenty-five thousand, one hundred and three fifty-nine, and as you can see by the pie chart, everybody is in the current to the thirty-one to sixty days, which is, that new bylaw is working really great for our utility department. In the receivable areas, we have, the accounts receivable customers that we did invoices for included airport fees, landfill fees, security for patrols, permits, tax certificates, kinisoo for groups and school billings. And for our second quarter, the outstanding was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, a ninety-two dollars and fifty-six cents. And again, it's mostly in the current, and we have a little bit in our one-twenty-one and over, and we are working very hard on trying to reach those customers. Some of them are, they have not left us a forwarding address or phone number, so we may have to have in the future some items to write off here. But we're trying our hardest to try to reach those customers to get payment. And that's it for the Finance Department.
Can we have some thank yous for her? Next. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to say that we did implement our online hiring tool this spring, which was a great success. Seemed like it worked really well. There was a lot of great interest. You will see in some of the slides that we have, our numbers vary greatly from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four. Active and new hires is very different, and that is basically because we are now taking on the parks, which means that we've hired a large amount of people to tend to those. So those are why you're seeing such a fluctuation from last year to this year. In the last slide of recruitment at a glance, you will see that the positions recruited is much lower than the contracts and the orientations that we've done, and that was because we have put together a different recruiting tool, which left some of the interviews and such within the departments and eliminated us having to go and interview for three hundred different positions. That's all I have. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Next, Mark.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I'm here today to present the I T fourth quarter report. On your sheets, you can see I T help desk tickets. Service requests have been fairly steady over the last five quarters, with a low in Q four of two thousand twenty-three. It's normal due to the holiday season. I T service requests have been fairly steady over the last five quarters. Also, we're sitting around the four-year, or sorry, five-year average of four hundred and eighty-four tickets. Currently, four hundred and eighty was in the last quarter, so right on that average. Our ticket resolution times were up a little bit from last report, for the better. Forty-eight percent were resolved within one hour and eighty-four percent within five hours. Our current security risk score is at seven point four. We're pretty happy about that. We've finally gotten below the industry score of seven point seven, and still working to improve that. Obviously, there's always new threats, emerging security issues that we have to patch and take care of. Our risk statistics, you'll see we've seventy-two risks in the last thirty days, and that's thirty days from when the report was generated at the end of. and that's thirty days from when the report was generated at the end of June. Sixteen hundred and seventy-three risks were mitigated in that quarter, with six hundred and sixty-eight unresolved. Our security coverage score continues to be a hundred percent, and that is basically just how engaged we are with the platform. Everything from our managed detection to staff training. Any questions?
Yeah, Councilor Skarson.
So is this, like, is this you guys doing the, or is that someone external?
Through the reef, so we do the patching and the maintenance. We use third-party tools to help us collect those metrics.
Sorry, I'm talking about the audio in here and the screens and all that, the upgrades.
Oh, sorry, we have, through the reef, we have an external contractor working on things. Right now, we're waiting on some backordered equipment.
So when, when do you expect that to commence?
We're hoping to be live at the latest in October.
October?
Yeah.
So like, why did we take down these TVs and stuff until, and we knew we were going to be backordered till October?
We had to start the project while council was on a bit of a break, just to get things moving. We may have the audio in place before that. Officially, the system should be fully functional. We're hoping we can actually, in the next few meetings, have the audio up and running and use the new audio system.
Yeah, Councilor Fedev.
Yeah, with all the new IT, I guess hacks and security, cybersecurity stuff that's been happening out there, I was just wondering how your new program has been working since, I think we got a new software program last year, did we not?
Through the reef, correct. We've been with our security contractor and software program now for just over a year.
Yeah.
We're quite happy, it's helped us just, just see the issues and be able to patch them quicker. We have tools in place that if something did happen, you know, a lockdown could happen in the middle of the night on our, our environment if things were compromised. So there's that twenty-four-seven monitoring as well. I think the value is there, after hearing about some of the other municipalities, definitely. I sleep better at night having it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an ongoing thing, and seemingly you can never get rid of some of the bugs that are there. And I know, like, our neighboring municipality has suffered a lot because of it. And all, like a lot of the service industry mechanics and everything else, there was, there was a massive one done there not too long ago on that, and it's just been very painful, so I'm glad we're ahead of the game. So yeah, thanks for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say a little bit of a praise, I guess, because I sit on other boards and stuff, and we, we farmer IT guys out here and there, we were, and everyone always talks about how great the IT is in the MD, so just tell the rest of the guys their thanks for all they do, and appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? Right on, thanks.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Today, I am here to present the second quarter progress report for occupational health and safety. So Q two is a really big and challenging quarter for us. We see a massive increase in staff in this year. We saw our Q two staff go from one hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty-five. Departments have to onboard train and get these folks working in a really short period of time. These folks worked a total of just almost seventy-seven thousand hours for Q two. And at the beginning of Q two in safety, we have this uneasiness because we have all these new folks that are coming on our site. So, looking at our lagging indicators, we are down slightly in our recordable injuries. We had four injuries, which included three modified soft tissue, sorry, modified work soft tissue injuries and a minor scrape first aid. So these numbers have been creeping down slightly on our lagging side for recordable injuries. For property damage, you can see we're down just slightly, but we did show a trend in June where we had six of the eight incidents were backing up. So the subsequent investigation indicated an erosion of standards as workers were failing to follow basic controls such as using a spotter and walkarounds, and there were some training issues with our new staff. Turning now to our leading indicators, which are our proactive numbers that help us identify problems so we can fix them, we continue to see good numbers on this side. In twenty twenty-four, we are up slightly for hazard identifications, which means we have more people acknowledging and identifying hazards in the field so we can fix them before they become a problem. Near miss reporting is staying constant with twenty twenty-three. We were happy in twenty twenty-three to bring the numbers up to this, so matching them in twenty twenty-four is a good indicator. We like to call near misses free learnings because essentially an event happened, but no one got injured, and it gives us an opportunity to investigate and fix the problem and learn from it. For equipment and vehicle inspections, leading indicator, we are down slightly in this quarter, but holding fairly steady in comparison, and will likely stabilize here at these numbers in our equipment and vehicle inspections. For me, one of the most important leading indicators is our hazard assessment because identifying hazards and applying the controls are a key part of the safety management system. These site-specific hazard assessments are done daily or even multiple times a day by our boots-on-the-ground folks. Our workers have done a really great job submitting almost eighteen hundred hazard assessments this quarter. For worksite inspections, they've increased substantially in this quarter's number, as it includes our campgrounds. I will say, this number might be a little bit misleading. Some folks were doing a inspection rather than a site-specific hazard assessment, which we got turned around for the next quarter. But with this important number, we see more managers and supervisors attending sites and interacting with their staff. In addition, workers are able to take ownership over their sites by taking pride in the inspection process. The leading indicator of positive observations, you can see now that this number has ballooned. You may remember in twenty twenty-two, we had three, in twenty twenty-two, we had three inspections. In, we had fifteen in all of twenty twenty-three, and this year, in, we have almost sixty inspect, positive observations in this quarter. The theory is that if you get workers to report, well, anything, they will be more likely to report other things as well. So this was a clever way to get workers to start using the system and reporting peer-to-peer observations. We worked hard to foster this metric, and we can now see the benefits of these numbers overall in all of our reporting. Also, this quarter, we had our annual safety day, Safety Palooza. All of, at our all-staff safety meeting, we featured, had almost two hundred MD employees working together on cross-departmental teams through twenty-one stations. The stations included minute-to-win-it games and a safety question, which was taken from our audit. The sinking lake spotters took top prize, and it was a great safety culture team-building day. And then finally, just a little bit about the update to our business plan. Our goal, our first goal was to improve the safety culture at the MD. We targeted, we attempted to do this using increased proactive, to increase the proactive recording, reporting by five percent, which we achieved in Q one, as our business plan had said. We established weekly visits to Kinesu Ridge, and we developed alternate methods of communicating occupational health and safety messages to our internal stakeholders. And ultimately, it would lead into goal two, which was to reduce recordable incidents by at least five percent, and we are on track for that for our twenty twenty-four year. Any questions?
Thank you, yes, Councilor Skarson.
So would you say that with your recordable injuries, is that like mostly new hires? Is that what you're saying, that we're getting hurt?
Through the reef, it's not mostly new hires. We do have that across all levels of staff. So I, I never target it just to the new hires.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking, in your opinion, is that, are these like long-term employees that are still getting hurt? Or is it mostly, is one demorec, is it one demographic over another, is what I'm asking?
So based on the four injuries this quarter, no, it's not one demographic over another.
And then, you know, for, let's say for someone that, as mentioned, backs into something because they didn't have a spotter. So like, I guess you don't have to guess specifically, is there any recourse for someone that does something like that?
Through the reef, so that would depend on the circumstances. So an investigation would follow, and if, if they weren't trained properly or they're new, in, in the case that you're asking, then we'd have to look at our system, did we provide enough training? If it was a long-term employee who had enough experience and knowledge, and they had an erosion of standards, then that would be up to the supervisor to decide if there's recourse, because in the safety world, we don't do the disciplining.
Yeah, okay. I would just, and then lastly, I would just say as a statement that goal number two should honestly be, recordable incident, incidents should be zero, not less by five percent. Like that, your goal should just be zero, people getting hurt and zero property damages, don't you think?
Ultimately, it would be nice if it was zero. I don't believe that's an achievable metric at the MD yet.
Anyone else, any other? Yeah, to be, zero is pretty tough anywhere.
I don't think it's that tough. I mean, there's lots of places to do it, right? Why did you say at the MD, though? Is there, like, is there something different about at the MD? How would you work than other places to achieve zero?
Through the reef, we would like to achieve zero. We have a really good reporting culture, so we look at incidents from the most minor scrape to a bruise. So all of those things are pulled into our reporting, which in other industries may not be.
Yeah, I have to agree. Some industries, you don't report the little thing like that, but in ours, we're reporting everything. Like I skinned my thing changing a guard last night, so that'd be reported.
It would be.
Well, if you're comparing it to farming, yes, you're probably right, nothing's being reported.
Well, I'm not. It's others. All right, well, thank you. Yeah.
So I would just like council, or I would just ask council to make a motion to accept the Corporate Services two thousand twenty-four second quarterly report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion that council accepts the Corporate Service two thousand twenty-four second quarterly report as information, if that's okay with you? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you for all that. Nine point five, chief. Go ahead, nine point five point one. Thank you, everyone. You guys, too. Hey, Steph.
Hello.
Hello.
So first, I have bylaw number eighteen seventy-five, Joint Assessment Review Board's bylaw. So in February of twenty twenty-four, council approved a request to establish a joint assessment review board in partnership with the Summer Village of Pelican Arrows, and also instructed administration to reach out to other neighboring municipalities to inquire on their interest in participating in the joint board as well. So since that time, administration did reach out to the municipalities and get feedback on which ones would like, had, did have interest in participating. And we have drafted a final version of a joint bylaw for council's consideration, and we also have the final draft agreement for your reference. The, the bylaws for reading and the agreement is just for your information. Since February, we have coordinated this initiative, and we are presenting bylaw number eighteen seventy-five for the establishment of a joint assessment review board for first reading. Each municipality will be presenting a bylaw of similar form to their council, and as each respective municipality passes their new bylaw, administration will coordinate the execution of the agreement for the joint board accordingly. So the draft bylaw is attached as appendix A, and the draft agreement is attached as appendix B. The new bylaw will be posted on our website, and updated public information will be available online once the joint board is established. And our recommended action is just that bylaw number eighteen seventy-five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville to establish joint assessment review boards with partner municipalities be given first reading.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, uh, motion for first reading.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Fedev, for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy-five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to establish joint assessment review boards with partner municipalities to be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. Let's, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point five point two.
So the next item is bylaw number eighteen seventy-six, kind of in line with the joint assessment review board. This is the bylaw to establish an intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board. So again, this was shared with each partner, neighboring municipality that expressed interest in participating, and this is the final drafts that we've come up with and have been provided to them as well for presentations to their council for adoption and approval. And our recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen seventy-six, being a bylaw of the municipality to establish an intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board with partner municipalities be given first reading.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion for first reading.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchik, for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy-six, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to establish intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board with the partnering municipalities will be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm not seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point five point three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. This is, the report is the CAO's office two thousand twenty-four second quarterly report. And we'll start with marketing and communications.
Thank you.
Good afternoon through the chair to all of council. I'm presenting the second quarter report for marketing communications. Highlights from projects this quarter include the production and mailout of the twenty twenty-four Guide to Rural Living. The twenty twenty-three annual report and twenty twenty-four budget document was completed. Our website top views through quarter two was the homepage, closely followed by the MD campgrounds page with campground, campsite reservations opening at just over ninety-five hundred. Page views across our website, total of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four. MD Facebook reach was up a hundred and ninety point nine percent over last quarter, and Facebook profile visits increased by a hundred and twenty-nine, or a hundred and twenty-six point nine percent. The top social media posts through Meta included three from National Public Works Week, mattress recycling, cost of dust control, and grain bag rolling. Additional posts with top reach was the release of the MD ownership map, the Seoul or state of local emergency, and the first fire ban back on April twenty-fifth. That concludes my overview of Q two.
Thank you. Any, any questions, gentlemen? Thanks.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I will be presenting the second quarter reports for the customer service team. During this time, we had approximately five hundred and thirteen cash batches that we had worked on and sent over to the bank. We received nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three calls. Twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven calls went through our automated phone system. We had approximately nine hundred and fifteen walk-ins. We assigned two hundred and two landfill cars. During this time, we assisted the property tax department with the twenty twenty-four tax notices mailouts and tax certificate search. We assisted and participated in the emergency preparedness event. We provided campground cash receipting training to the parks department. We created our customer service hub with the new building maintenance and janitorial request forms. We created our customer service hub with the new building maintenance and janitorial request forms. And we completed our customer service business plan.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello again. So for Legislative and Information Services, we have our council meetings, our team prepared agenda packages, and provided secretariat support for six regular meetings of council and two committee of the whole meetings. During this time, we also coordinated a total of ten public hearings and delegations to council, which, one being a public hearing and nine delegations. Also during this quarter, one special meeting of council was scheduled but subsequently canceled. There were three bylaws in draft and still under review by their respective departments for future consideration by council during the second quarter. Five bylaws which were finalized and pending either first reading or second and third reading. And five bylaws, excuse me, were passed and one repealed during that quarter. As for policies, there were five new and seventeen existing policies in draft or under review for council consideration at a future meeting, with four new and two amending policies adopted and one policy rescinded. At the end of the second quarter, there was still two policies pending review by administration. Other items of note for our department, our records management coordinator continues to make progress with our records management program. Work continued towards the creation of a joint assessment review board and intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board with draft documents sent to each potential partner municipality for a period to review and provide feedback. In March, our department received two FOIC referrals from other organizations. This means that our organizations had, that, this means that the other organization had received a FOIC request from the public, and their records in response to these requests involved the municipality, typically in that they are municipal documents that were sent to that organization. So when we receive these types of notifications, we have a certain amount of time to review the records and provide feedback on what we require to be redacted or withheld under the FOIC back before the records are released to the person who made the initial request. So the two referrals we received, excuse me, in quarter two were from the federal government and the provincial government. Three of our team members, myself included, had the privilege of attending the 2024 intermunicipal, sorry, International Institute of Municipal Clerks Conference in Calgary. So this conference welcomed attendees from all regions of Canada and the U S, as well as several international attendees that work in similar natured municipal or government roles. It is usually hosted in the U S, so having the opportunity to attend it in Alberta was a very unique experience for us, and it was really great. And lastly, we completed the creation of our digital land use bylaw registry. This included scanning of each land use bylaw and entering the metadata for each one individually. And that is it for my report.
Thank you.
Administration's recommendation is that council accepts the C A O office 2024 second quarterly report as information.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Councilor Fedev, for making this motion that council accepts the C A O's office 2024 second quarterly report as information. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Councilor Kravjak.
Uh, thank you, Riff Kalinsky. I think we should bring this back to administration until the regular C E O comes back. Just kidding.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say, only the Reeve makes mistakes on words, and you're gonna say, Steph, you can't make mistakes on words like that. That's what I thought you were gonna say. Any other discussion on this? Nope. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and counsel. Correspondence has been attached to the agenda, items number ten point one through ten point nineteen, with the addition of ten point two zero. There's a few items that I'd like to highlight. Item number ten point nine is a proclamation request from Lakeland Center for F, uh, fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. And the proclamation is attached if council wishes to pass a, a motion for the Reeve to, to give that proclamation. Item number ten. That's ten point nine, yes. Shall I just go through the list and then we can go back?
Sure.
Or do you want to do the one at a time? Ten point one three is a letter from Lakeland Society for Truth and Reconciliation. It's a donation request for the 2024 National Day of Truth and Reconciliation commemorative activities. They're asking for eighteen hundred dollars. The event is going to occur on September the thirtieth this year. This was an item that was funded through the donation and sponsorship program in 2023. Item number ten point one four is an email from Northeast Munichor Limited. It's an invitation to a trail ride occurring September ninth. And item number ten point one six is an email from Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises, or CARE. It's an invitation to the 2024 conference, which will occur September eleventh to thirteenth for Barry and a guest. And they're requesting the Reeve to have some opening remarks. And finally, ten point two zero is an offer from the Ronald McDonald House Taste of Home Gala event that will occur either November first in Calgary or November fifteenth in, in Edmonton. And I've lost my piece of paper, which...
Well, it's not like you don't have twenty thousand pieces of paper on your desk there.
I mean, this is ridiculous, isn't it?
Yeah.
I found it. I found it. So the Taste of Home Gala is, a table of eight is one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so there is two separate events, one on November first and one on, on November fifteenth. The first one in Calgary, the second one in Edmonton.
Okay. Would someone like to attend this gala? Or have we already spoken for, have we already spoke for a seat, or just, that's, no?
We just got the email yesterday.
Can we bring that up again next, next council meeting? So have a little bit of time to think about it?
Sure.
Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
Just, just for consideration, we certainly can bring it back at the next meeting, but the V I P pricing is only until, only available until September fifth.
Okay.
So the V I P pricing will not, will no longer be available at our, as of our next meeting. Which was the only reason we decided to bring it today as an emergent item.
So is this open just to council or just to staff as well, or, or whatever? Like, I don't know if we could fill eight from just council. Yeah.
I know in the past, we've only taken two. The last year, there was only two taken, and the year before.
So.
So we only took twos.
Before September fifth, we t, to take advantage of this offer.
Who can go here, then?
When is this a deal?
End of September, no?
It's in November.
November. But the deadline is September?
For the V I P pricing, the deadline is September fifth.
Yeah.
I, I, do you know, last year, I think we only purchased two tickets.
Two tickets? You know, I should go. Yeah. That's six so far? Okay, I'll go. So let's take a table, and we'll, we'll, we'll bring two, two along. Okay? We'll have to make a motion after your correspond, or during. Can we make a motion now?
Make that motion for table six.
Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion to acquire a table of eight for the Ronald McDonald House Gala. Any discussion on that? Tell me when you have it up online, because I don't have it on my screen, and I don't wanna go find it. Cause I'll go off where I'm supposed to be. We can take motorbikes, if that helps you.
Is it in December?
Yeah. He's good. He hasn't drove his motorcycle in December. We'll find enough. So we're good. Okay, all of them, or I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Can I back up on that? You were telling me that I'm supposed to attend something here, and I'm looking over quickly. What I'm, what am I supposed to attend here and give a?
Ten point nine.
Ten point nine?
Ten point, uh.
No.
Ten point one six is the CARES conference.
Oh, yeah. I got that. Okay. Uh, but I gotta do ten point nine?
Ten point nine is a proclamation request from Lakeland.
For September.
Center for Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder.
Okay, can I do that right now?
Do you want a motion first?
Yeah, let's have a motion first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, then we declare, make, do that declaration.
Oh, we have it? Did you fill in the blanks? Oh, I'd like. Very nice. Are you ready for that motion? Yes? All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried. Stephanie's way. Okay, fetal alcohol spend disorder awareness mount. And International A, sorry, F A S D Day, September two thousand twenty-four. Whereas fetal alcohol spending disorder, F A S D, is diagnostic term that describes the range of effects that occur on an individual, individual who is parentally exposed to alcohol. And whereas children and adults with F A S D in Canada and around the world experience lifelong physical, mental, mental and behavioral disabilities, as well as learning disabilities. And whereas caregivers, family professionals, and individuals living with F A S D, as well as others around the world, will observe International F A S D Awareness Month in September and day on September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, with a minute of reflection at nine oh nine A M. Now, therefore, I, Barry Kalinsky, Reeve of the M D of Bonneville number eighty-seven, do here, proclaim September ninth, two thousand twenty-four as Fetal Alcohol Spending Disorder Awareness Day and September as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month. In the M D of Bonneville, I encourage everyone to act with compassion and understanding towards individuals who have experienced parental alcohol exposure and take both personal and professional responsibility to become a better informed about F A S D and prevention strategies. Just a little note on that, when Mike and I first started council years ago, our Reeve had two kids living with him like that, and he took care of these two kids with this fetal. And he did an amazing job raising these, these two young children. It was his grandkids, and he raised them, and they're active in our society now. So I gotta give him credit. It was really amazing what he did with these children, and they brought him up. It was really nice.
Those were his two grandchildren, right?
That's correct. Yeah. It was a class act by Miss, our, Mr. Ed Rondo and his wife. Okay, uh, just need a motion to?
Could I mention a few things?
Yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Yeah, now, there was a, I'll start off with that, ten point one four, the Northeast Munichor Ride. If, I know it's kind of harvest season, so I'm not gonna be able to attend this cause I gotta be helping home. But I was wondering if, uh, Mr. Bespelka would have some staff that would be able to go along on this ride with a quad? You guys go side by side, that you could send a couple of staff along this trail ride. Brian, this way, they'll be with the, the board members and that, they could kinda point some things out and get a better understanding of the trail.
Through the Reeve to Council Slipchak, yes, it is our intention that myself and I believe General Manager Yance are gonna attend this trail ride as well, as approximately seventy kilometers of the, of the ride are gonna be through the municipality. So, uh, there's gonna be a bunch of discussion items that they had listed in the agenda. So we just wanna see what's, what their expectations are of the M D for it. And I think the C A O is gonna attend as well.
Okay.
Right. So, yeah, well, I'll, the logistics will, if you're wanting to attend, or any council who wants to attend, just give me a call. Let me know who wants to attend, and I'll arrange some type of logistics for that.
Thank you. Anything else, Council Slipchak? Yeah?
On ten point one three, we still have time to, till next council meeting, to make a, a donation for that, like what we did in the previous years, truth and reconciliation.
I'm not familiar if there's a deadline in that request or not myself, but, um, because it's not until the end of the month, I would suspect that there would still be an opportunity if council shows at that time, too.
Yeah, it's all good.
The next one is ten point eight, orphan wells. And I read through it, and I see that we got like five thousand and some. What was it, though? Five? Five thousand five hundred and sixty-four orphan wells in our area. And I think I'd like to see us bring up Lake Nick's industry meeting, cause yourself, you're on it, and Mr. Kravjak. Talk to the industry players, see what their plans are for these orphan wells. If they're, like, how many they're looking to reclaim. The year in our area, cause this is concerning our area.
Yep.
Okay, so that was one point. And then we had a letter, ten point three, from Lakelibish, regards to Lakeland Forge Association. Like, is there something we need to do there, Mr. Reeve, or?
You sure it was ten point three?
Yeah. Looked there.
You said ten point three, letter from Lakelibish Olympic.
Yeah. Lakeland Forge Association about the pasture we have in that area. Like, I don't really know what that has to do with council, between Lakeland, I would think. I'm just asking for more of an understanding on this part.
I didn't look at that one at all.
Cause I, I don't know if it relates to maybe the past, cause I'm on the LARA board, and Lakeland, Lakelibish dropped out of it. So I don't know if there's some controversy going on over there or something, then. It's just another means or something, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, Mr. Reeve. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, Mr. Reeve.
Okay.
Is there something we need to do with that? Like, I just, I just don't understand, so.
Okay, brought your attention. I'll take a peek at it.
And one other thing is, we mentioned like earlier about our policy on alcohol and the M D because with the site link coming up. If we could, if I, can I make a motion now to bring that forward to next council meeting? So we can open for discussion for?
Well, you could just give, you could just give them direction to bring it to next council.
Okay.
You don't have to make a motion.
That's all we have to do?
I think so.
Could we bring that forward to next council meeting, please? Do I need most for?
To do what now?
Just a request, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can bring it to committee.
Oh, we can do it there? Okay, we'll do it committee of whole.
Okay, then you just bring it up as beginning of the meeting, just add it as a.
Okay.
Just add it in. Okay?
And could you also?
Yes.
To the committee of the whole, policy four eight point zero zero eight. That wrote.
Which one? That one?
The one we discussed today.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If we could get motions for these and then it'd be clear for administration what the purpose is for bringing them back and then they can have some of that detail that you'd be looking for in the report instead of bringing it and then requesting the detail at that time?
Okay.
Okay.
Fine.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for the, to bring to the committee meeting the alcohol policy for review prior to our site link, site link convention that's coming up in September eighteenth to twentieth on purchasing of alcohol in the M D.
I'm not aware of a policy that we have for purchasing.
Like, what are you talking about? For, so that people can't buy liquor or what do you mean?
No, because we got to, you got all these people coming out from other areas. When we can buy liquor and alcohol, if he won't cop to that, because that's part of our policy. If you want to make, if you can put a limit and have it for that, this event. For the site link meeting with all these business leaders coming in.
You want to get everybody drunk?
Don, your mic's not on.
That's the expense, that's the expense policy.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys understand that? Yes?
Okay, so I have to make a motion, too?
Uh, well, we better vote on that one first.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the policy numbers super quick.
All right. Can you bring that up on our screen somehow, too? I don't know how to get or where it's gonna be. Oh, man. Don't get old, Percy.
No?
No. Well. You can't move like you can today. Hey, Josh, don't get old. I'm pretty nimble until I try it and then I'm not as nimble.
It was very well up here.
I played baseball real hard that one day, the next day whole.
It's like the old time when you play once a week.
Yeah.
You play five games in three days.
Figure out, were you a part of that?
I, well, I have in the past, but I haven't.
We lost. Lots. We lost lots.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we have something, what's, what's it say? What's this? I don't know where to bring it up on my screen. I did. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you, Counselor Slupchik, for making this motion that council directs administration to bring back policy two B zero two five, reimbursing and expects claim policy to the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting to review the purchase of alcohol portion. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick?
The site link conference is the eighteenth to the twenty-first, I believe. So even if we discuss it at committee of the whole, we can't change a policy in time for the meeting. Because the, we don't, we can't make policies committee of the whole. That's just a recommendation to council. So it's kind of a pointless motion.
Who can have a straw vote?
The tenth, I believe.
If all of council is okay with changing the date, we can certainly, yes.
Okay, I'm okay with changing.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carried.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to bring a, a policy four eight dash, or sorry, four eight point zero zero eight to committee of the whole to discuss possible review of the undeveloped road allowances.
Matt, you need oxygen back there? Yeah. expiry date over. You got your T-shirt in there? They can make a nice nest in that T-shirt. That's Cole Lake Fest, isn't it?
Yeah, Ribfest.
Ribfest, yeah. All right, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making motion that council directs administration to bring back policy four A zero zero eight, clearing of undeveloped road allowance policy to the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four Committee of the Whole for review. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Is it good with the dates, Josh? Yes?
It's fine by me.
I'll call for the vote.
Oh, wow, unanimous.
That's carried. All right, just looking for your reports from members of council, if we have any.
Do you want a motion previously to receive?
Absolutely. Yes, I forgot that.
I'll make a motion to receive the, what are the?
Correspondence.
As information.
All right, thank you, Counselor Crick, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through twenty. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thanks for catching that.
Yes, sirree.
That is probably carried. Yes, on to reports from members of council.
So I had the Egg Service Board tour and just wanted to say we had a lot of people. It was a good tour, probably the best Egg Service Board tour I've been on since I've been going to them, which was before I was even on council. Highlight was the tour of the Hutterite Colony out by Malague. Just quite an incredible place, really. And then they also had a tour of the tree nursery in Bonneville, which is kind of neat. They produce over twenty million trees a year. And had, this week had the R M A, actually it was last week, I guess, R M A Zone Five, Zone Meeting, I guess. And there was one resolution passed to go forward to R M A and that's in regards to advocating for seniors for basically more incentives for them in their homes for home care and transportation needs. So that's it for me.
Yeah, yeah, what's also on that's Egg Service Board, I thought was pretty good. The only thing I didn't like about it is the list of things that my wife makes me do now around the yard to make it my own, like where else is it? So, yeah, back part a bit, but otherwise it was really nice to see. So I did attend the Egg, the Bible Egg Society meeting, my first one. They're just planning the Fall Fair, I guess, which is on September twelfth, I believe. Uh, no, the fourteenth. So it should be good. It's a pretty big event. They get the barbecue smoke off there as well. And then I also did the, had a B R A meeting there, which, as I look here, it looks, it was business as usual, not a whole bunch of report. I think they're just getting closer and closer each week to getting into the new building there. They're waiting to do some I T stuff, I think, with the fiber optics. But other than that, it's pretty much ready to go, so.
I had a lot of much repurchase that went on the road renovation tour. That was a wonderful thing to go see, the Pine, Pine View. The Pine View Colony, Glendon one, that was very interesting. And I can't believe how these guys, locals fix up all their yards there. As well as the bar, we had a bar lodge meeting last week and we got high vacancy, low vacancy rates there now. Just about all filled up our rooms. We're waiting on three rooms in the bar lodge to get renovated. Other than that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have much, Mr. Reeve. Went to hang in the thirties and the third, and the tenth. The Reeve and I flipped pancakes in Glendon and had a parade. I'm amazed how kind of great pancakes the Reeve makes.
Me, too.
And we had, and we. And we had just enough candy. It was very nice. Lodge meeting, yes, I think this is the first time since I came on that the Cole Lake Lodge is filled to capacity, which is very nice. It's gonna help the, the revenue, of course. And they did have a COVID outbreak here in the Bonne Lodge and I think now it's, it's all good. Also, went yesterday to the Greater North Lodge Meeting in Boyle. Everything looks good, operations look good and I'm just one vote out of nine there. So I just, whatever.
You sat and you listened.
But it's a very nice meeting. Yeah, so, and that's about all for me.
All right, thank you. Just start off with our M D tour. There's actually people trying to give their butter, what is their, hummingbirds away and trying to get blue jays. They're trying to get on my bus, of course. Just joking. Thank Josh for doing one bus. I did the other. I thought it was a great tour. We seen a lot. We, we made a lot of miles. It's pretty cool. I picked up a hitchhiker that morning, in the morning, and everyone didn't believe me. But he's one world renowned hitchhiker from Germany and he's been traveling for forty some years. Karina did a, a kind of exclusive on him and, yeah, he, I picked him up in the morning and put him in my son's house and took him on the tour in about twenty-five minutes. So then he stayed for four or five days, so pretty cool. Did hang in the thirties. I spent two days there welcoming people to hang in the thirties. It's one of our premier fundraisers for cancer in our area. So it's well attended again this year. I think the numbers are around three hundred and fifty thousand is what I got. It could be crawling up a little bit from there. Went to Glendon to flip pancakes and don't believe what Mike says. Mike is the premier pancake maker in Glendon. When you go over to his stove, every stinking, don't know how he does it, but every stinking pancake is, looks like someone, it's like someone took a picture and put it there. And so, and I tried and then when I, I had to leave to go to the Cherry Grove opening, groundbreaking for the church and my hitchhiker took over for me. So he was, he was working with Mr. Worstrick on the other, on the other grill. So I don't know how the, how the cakes were after that, but I think pretty good.
Yeah, and then he got lost and so I took him to the parade. He went and he was throwing candies for you.
Yep.
And then he says, I'm okay, Mike, but this lady was texting me, I don't know who she was.
Yeah.
Like, where is he? What does he look like?
Yeah.
So I.
We eventually got him to the Derby and he loved that. He never wa, he couldn't believe here in North America that we sma, smashed cars. He said, this, this would really catch on in Europe, he said. Pretty good, so, so did that. Went, like I said, I went to the Cherry Grove groundbreaking for the church. I got to spoke there. Counselor Fadayev and myself was there. There was a lot of attendance. Looks like, you know, a lot of people that attended that. Went to Glendon Derby, saw some cars get smashed. Another crazy thing that happened to me this week is a lady from the, from Philadelphia phoned me. She said she seen me on a broadcast in Vietnam, believe it or not, on the BBC when I was in Haiti. She was born in Haiti. But her grandfather was one of the founding people that was in this area. So when, just before Bonneville started, he was here from France. And I don't know, we don't know if he was here for two years or three years or one year. But he was well known enough that he named the two lakes just outside of Bonneville, Barrier Lake. It's not pronounced Barrier Lake in French, it's different. And then his wife's name was Charlotte. So that's how these two lakes got their names, a man that came from France. And if we do get that trail eventually, we can call it the Barrier Lake Trail. So I could invite him back, but they came all the way from the States to see, see us and I took him around and I finally from Charlotte Farms. And that was, I didn't think of that before, but Charlotte Farms wouldn't be called Charlotte Farms without the Charlotte Lake. And I took him to see Mrs. Gamash and she remembers her husband telling her a story that his father told him a story that he remembers the man that was here from France that named the two lakes in the early nineteen, like nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five. So pretty cool to find a lady in our area that remembers a story about. So, yeah, so that was pretty, I spent the day with him. I told him if they came out for the day, I would. And thank you to the M D, thank you for the town of Bonneville. They took him in here, they showed him around and I had M D staff here in the little room trying to find the oldest maps we had to try to. So I'm very thankful for everyone that put effort into. And then I got landowners involved and elderly people that, so it's pretty cool. So thank you. That's all I have. All right, I need a motion to go in camera, I believe. Yes, closed session, sorry. Thank you. Counselor Slupchik makes the motion to go closed session or in camera. Yeah, two minutes. So Peter Waiters quarters, he bought two on the north side of Charlotte Lake. One of them was, one of them is where her grandfather came here. And he came from like a villa in France with a winery and he brought his wife and three kids here and, you know, log cabin. It's crazy, eh? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah, thank you, someone. Good job today.